All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We have three commissioners absent this evening, Commissioners Majin, Atkinson, and Hudson. And to get right into it, item number two, citizen communication, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment. Oh, you moved, didn't you?
Yeah, we all moved.
I just go by the order, apologies. All right, we'll start over there. Citizen communication, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the Planning and Zoning Commission not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published agenda will only be heard by the commission. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes when we ask to state his or her name and address for the public record. We do have a couple of public comment items for later in the agenda, so if you're wishing to speak to any of those, we'll hold off until then. But for open comments, do we have anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing as none, we will move on to item three, the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the commission and will be acted by one motion. The items include preliminary and final plots where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If any commissioner desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, we'll move it to the regular agenda for further consideration. Are there any items the commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda? All right, we have 3A, which is approving a preliminary plan for Flugerville Downtown East-West subdivision. We also have 3B, which is approving a preliminary plan for Olson Farms subdivision preliminary plan. 3C, which is approving minutes for the February 3rd, 2025 meeting. 3D, approving the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes for March 3rd, 2025. And 3E, approving the minutes from the May 13th joint work session meeting with city council. If there's nothing else, I'll accept a motion and a second to approve items 3, A, B, C, D, and E.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? No? All right, motion passes, thank you very much. All right, moving on, section four, discuss and consider. Seeing as there was no items moved from the consent agenda, we'll start with 4A, which is discuss and consider action regarding the Old Town Park master plan.
All right, well, thank you, commissioners. My name is Jeff Bishay, I'm Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. I'm going to walk you through the Old Town Park master plan, which you all have been working on with us for the last six to eight months. It's a long time coming, I'm excited to be presenting this information to you. What you're going to see tonight is the master plan itself, mine is a executive summary from our design team. And so we'll go through all the information, if you have any questions, feel free to stop. We can discuss. So sort of how we got here, you all will know this pretty well because you've been on the steering committee. But we created a steering committee for the Old Town Park master plan, made up of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission around the middle of last year. And we had four workshop meetings in the fall of winter of 2024. And if you'll remember, and I'll remind you if you don't, the steering committee goals through that process were to create an enduring and innovative master plan reflective of the unique Flugerville culture. A vibrant and inclusive transformation of the original city center of the community. A non-traditional park design that highlights our Trail Capital of Texas mindset, which is even more important now that we officially received that designation. And a plan that can be flexibly faced to grow as funding allows. So after our meetings last year, we took it to a city council lunch and learn to talk through the process. And some of the design team's findings in February, and then took the first draft of this to city council work session in April. And our next steps are to receive, oh, there we go, now I'm louder. Receive approval from the P and Z after we got approval from the park commission last month. So sort of as a reminder of, you know, how it is that we got here. So we're looking at Old Town Park, which is right across the street from our historic water tower here in Flugerville. I won't go over the site history again, but one thing that we made sure to highlight every time we met as a steering committee was this quote from a resident. It says, "This water tower represents who we are and where we came from." And I feel like our steering committee, our design teams did a really good job of highlighting that at every, every turn. The importance of this space can't be understated. And as you'll remember, we had a really robust public engagement process throughout this process. We built a mini water tower for engagement, there you see our mini water tower with its big brother. That was by far the most popular thing that we did to this engagement, we had folks coming up to our table just to take pictures with that. And then we tried to divert them to our public engagement to try to give us some feedback, but that was absolutely the draw. We've actually had a few offers to buy that since we, since we did this public engagement, but that's ours, so we're going to use it. We were at Deutschenfest for about eight hours on the Saturday of Deutschenfest, we got a ton of good feedback there, we were at one of the Rock the Blocks in the fall. And then probably the most important thing we did during this process was our onsite neighborhood engagement. We used door hangers within a three, three-block radius to get folks out to the park. One weeknight and had a public engagement exercise with folks in that neighborhood. Discuss the, the ideas, what we're looking at, what they would like to see out of this, and we gave them free snow cones. So we had a lot of teens actually come up to the engagement because they were, weren't sure what was going on, got a free snow cone. And then we got some engagement from them, so we got a lot of touch points there. We also had an online survey that was open for about two months, we got 120 responses on that. And something that we did during our Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan was we tallied total touch points throughout that process. So our system-wide master plan had about 30,000 touch points, which we were incredibly excited about. And has sort of set the standard for system-wide master plans across the country now. But this master plan for a one-acre piece of property had over 1,200 touch points. And so, you know, we're really excited about that, we think that this is really going to be representative of what the community wants. And our design team did a great job of engaging people in a really fun way throughout this process. So one of the first questions that we got from folks that engaged with us was just some feedback on existing park design. Park designs in the area, think that it's really good for people to be able to see, you know, visually, something that maybe they've even visited in person. And sort of see how that can translate into the space that we're looking at here. And what we saw, a lot more overwhelmingly than even these numbers show, was people's connection to Kingsbury Commons, which is at Peace Park in downtown Austin. And the elements that, that exist within that area of Peace Park were a lot of what people wanted to see in this space. So you'll see some common design elements between this and that, which are places to gather, natural play elements, places that cool, of course, trail connections here. Some elevation opportunities, so if you've been to Peace Park and you've seen this globe, they, they have a, an elevated walkway that goes up to that globe. And people can, can go in there and rest and relax and play. Something that resonated with people in, in this process as well. Of course shade, which is huge for us in all of our parks. And then connecting both of the park spaces. So these two parcels that we're discussing are bisected by Hoops, I think it's Hoops Avenue, actually, not Hoop Street, but at Second Street. And so part of the public engagement was asking folks, what do they want to see done with that roadway? Do, do they just want to, you know, enhanced crossing, some increased safety there? Do we want to actually close that part of the street and incorporate it into the park? And we heard pretty overwhelmingly that the best idea was to close that street and incorporate it into the park space. Now, that's one thing to hear that from folks across the city, it's another thing to hear that from folks that live directly adjacent to this park, which is also what we heard. We talked to a lot of the people that live right along this park. This neighborhood is a grid, so we asked the question, do you feel like if this was closed, this is going to take you too far out of your way? And we heard unanimously, at least in person there, that no, they didn't feel like that was, they felt the benefit to adding that to the park was, far outweighed the loss of that street. So there are a couple of homes that do have their access on Hoops, Hoops Avenue, so it wouldn't completely be closed, it's just the space that bisects the street near these two parcels. Some feedback from surveys, I just wanted to highlight one thing here, you see the green and blue pie chart there, is how far do you live from the park? So we had 29% of respondents lived within a half mile of the park, and 44% of folks lived within a mile of the park. So almost half of the folks that responded to the, the survey lived within a mile, which is really important to us. This is a, a space that hasn't seen a lot of change in a long time. And what we're, what we're discussing with this concept is, is a pretty big change. And so we wanted to make sure that those people that lived in that area were, were heard, and that their, their voices were listened to during this process. One of the big questions that we asked throughout the entire process was what amenities do you want at Old Town Park? And we were pretty vague about this, our design team just wanted to get a feel for what they wanted to see out of this place, what do they want to do there? And the top four that we saw were play elements, shade structures, places that cool, and trail connections, which weren't really that surprising to us. But it was good to know that that was the top four that people had in mind throughout this process. You also see we asked, what do you want to do at Old Park? And we saw a lot of folks said either recreational play or relaxation, which makes sense that, that, in that neighborhood in particular, it's very multi-generational. You've got a lot of young families, young kids, and you've also got a lot of retired folks who have lived there for a long time. And so our, our hope throughout this process was to create a multi-generational space where it's not just a playground where, where families with kids are visiting. We want it to be a place that people can socialize, they can relax, they can go read a book, have their coffee. And also a place for those families to take their kids. And the other question that we asked was how can the existing water tower be reimagined? And I don't think this is very surprising either, but people didn't want to see it be reimagined. They wanted to keep the water tower as it is. The second most popular item on that was to create a light installation, and we're, we're one step ahead of the curve on that because it's lit now. So people were pretty happy to hear about that, we were making that change as we were doing this public engagement. So we got a pretty easy win with a lot of folks that wanted to see it lit. As y'all remember through this process, they used a lot of design inspiration that's sort of outside the box, it's not just a playground replacement with some benches. We were tasked with really thinking creatively about this space. And so our design team looked across the country and a lot in Austin to try to figure out what some of those design inspirations should be. And these are some that they used throughout this process. And so one of the things that they were trying to do throughout this process, and y'all will remember this from all the meetings we had with our design team, is, is an educational component. So with the water tower being what it is and the staple in our community, they, they wanted to highlight the city's connection to water. So you'll see there's a flow through this, this concept. And so on the right side of the screen, that's the north side of the park, so going from north to south, they sort of tell the story of water in our community from access to delivery to the reclamation of water. So telling the story of the Colorado River and Lake Flugerville where we, we access our water. Utilizing the water tower to, to sort of show the delivery of that. And then on the south side of the park, there's a lot of native plant gardens and, and rain gardens that highlight the reclamation of water in the, in the community. And then in keeping with that sort of flowy theme, they, they tried to keep some of the active recreational opportunities to the north side of the park. And as it moves down to the south, it, it moves to the passive side, because those two things can coexist, but if you can separate them at all. So people have the space to relax, and then they've got the space to recreate, that's, that's sort of the goal here. This is the program diagram, I am not a landscape architect, so I wouldn't be able to do this quite as much justice. I think we'll, I'll cover a few things here, and we'll go to the concept design so that you can sort of see where they landed on all these things. But I do want to highlight something that's really easy to see here, which is, on a one-acre park that's in a neighborhood like this, it's really important to buffer the park from the folks that live directly adjacent to it. So this sort of squiggly line on the edges of the, which is actually the west and the north, is an evergreen buffer, and you'll see that in some of these concepts. To try to keep some of the noises and the, the play, some of that sound away from those folks. And then obviously sightlines are important, you don't necessarily want people looking directly into your backyard from the park. And so they did a good job of trying to create a buffer so that that doesn't happen. They also designed the amenities so that there's no, and you'll notice that yellow line there is an elevated walkway. There's no spot where that elevated walkway is looking into someone's yard, they were very thoughtful about where they put these amenities. And so this is the overall master plan, and we'll, we'll dive into some drawings a little bit deeper than this. But you'll see that flow, so starting on the, the right side of the screen, going to the left, you can see where it sort of tells that story of, of water flowing through this space. And then there's active, there's an active lawn, there's interactive water feature, and then some play elements sort of in the middle of the, the park. And then as you go to the south, that's where the more passive recreation spaces are. And this is sort of a reminder of, of what that space looks like, it's a blank slate for us currently. And so, like I said, our design team did a pretty good job, a pretty great job of reimagining this space. Making it more than, like I said, just a playground replacement and some new benches. So there's the bird's eye view. And this is, so our walkthrough here is going to be going from south to north, so we're, we're entering the park in the passive area. This is rain gardens, native gardens, and then you don't see it, but off to the left, they've got additional seating areas for folks. And then this is the, the south entrance to the elevated walkway. Again, you can't do a whole lot on a one-acre property, and so sometimes you got to go up to increase those recreational opportunities. So in keeping with the Trail Capital of Texas idea, they took that and ran with it and made an elevated walkway that, that will go right next to the water tower you'll see here. And there's some additional seating areas along that walkway. But they also made the water tower a space to rest and relax and, and sort of enjoy community. One highlight too, and this is just a concept, so keep that in mind, that things as we go into design can change, and we can make other decisions. But they did add, they didn't reimagine the water tower, but they did add an art element towards, towards the base of the water tower. This one is something that they've done in other parks, it's glass, or it's something that can be outdoors, it's not going to break and shatter everywhere. But it's this colored glass that, when the sun shines on it at a different part of the day, it will, it will create colors on the ground that change as the sun moves. And so in thinking through that, it's a, it's a great way to incorporate art into the water tower without changing what the water tower looks like when you're driving down Pecan or driving down Second. And it, you know, it doesn't take away from the nostalgia that people feel with that water tower. Moving on to the observation deck, so they, they took an idea directly from Peace Park, which is that globe with the net. Anytime that we were there, we visited it twice during this process, I've been there several times, it's a great amenity for teens. One thing I noticed is that it's, it's tough to engage teens in a, in a park project, and it's something that is always asked of us, and it's not easy to do. So we incorporated one of those play nets into this space, not just for teens, you know, it's, again, it's got multi-generational purposes. But we wanted a space where people can hang out, relax, and have fun. And that's a really good one to incorporate multi-generational play. Underneath the observation deck there is a lot of the play elements. So this is where we'll have some sort of playground amenities, but you also have seating, so these, there's these swings, these loop swings that are good for adults, for kids. And then you also have a lot of things that are engaging for families with young kids. This is what it looks like at night, and we'll talk about that a little bit shortly. Moving on to the north side of the park, this is the pavilion, so the hope in a, in a park that's right in the middle of one of our oldest neighborhoods is that this would be a space for birthday parties, this would be a space for reunions. Might even be a space for community gathering, just for that neighborhood to get together. And the idea would be that the city would be able to reserve that, but it would be used for anybody if it's not reserved, just like any of our pavilions in, in our park system. Coming out of the pavilion there, you'll see the interactive water feature sort of at the base of the elevated walkway. It's not the typical splash pad you would think of that's got, you know, things dumping on kids and all that stuff, it's, it's more passive. Kids can still play in it, they'll still have a, a good time, it's a recirculating system. But it'll also be a good, you know, relaxation amenity year-round. So if you're not able to play in that space because it's fall or wintertime, it sort of, again, tells the story of water through, through our community. And then we've got an active play lawn right, right beside it. And then here's what it looks like at night, so this was a big topic of conversation with our design team because the proximity to adjacent houses and houses across the street. With all these amenities, you absolutely want it to be lit, you want it to be well-lit so that it's safe, you know what's going on underneath the observation deck and the elevated walkway. But you don't want it to be too lit, because then you've got lights shining into folks' houses, you don't want this to look like a soccer field, you know, on a weeknight. So they did a great job of incorporating some low trail lights, there's some downlights underneath the observation deck, so again, it still provides that sense of safety without lighting up the neighborhood. There's a street view, sort of from that same angle. And then there's the bird's eye view. And so one, again, a topic of conversation was parking. And so the idea here is to provide a road diet for Second, Second Street. So currently it's a 29-foot street, so this would reduce that to 22 feet, which is more than enough room for two-way traffic. But instead of taking parking into the park and losing acreage, they took that parking out into the roadway. So you'll see there's some of these islands with trees and some, some landscaping that, that create a parallel parking space. And then it takes that out of the drive, drive lane. And so it adds about 20 parking spaces without losing any of the acreage within the parking, within the park itself. And in keeping with that, we want to make sure that this, this park is connected to the community around it, which it currently isn't, there's no sidewalks going to or from it. So the design team worked on some potential connectivity solutions, which are a sidewalk going up Second Street, which would connect this to historic downtown and, and, you know, thus downtown east in the future. And then there's an existing alleyway that's, that's city-owned, that goes east-west, so potentially using that to connect the park to the existing trail system on the east. And then there are existing sidewalks south of the park, so utilizing, again, more sidewalks to connect to those spaces. We went through that pretty quickly, any questions that you have?
So the, I forget what it was called, the interactive water feature, you mentioned that was more passive. But what's the, the vision of that, is that it would just be mostly running water, or is it still kind of like dynamic in the way that like water's coming up or like flowing down?
Sorry if I'm making anyone crazy here.
I'm a frequent splash pad.
Splash pad user, so the inspiration for that was taken from, this is also Peace Park, this splash pad at Peace Park.
Oh, it looks like Mueller.
And so, again, it's, it's interactive, it's got the, the splashes coming up, but it's nothing over, over top. So sometimes that's running off, off-season, and it's just a water feature. So it's still interactive, it'll still be fun for families, but it's less obtrusive, I guess, it doesn't have things that are sort of in the way when it's not working, it's not on.
Okay, yeah, whenever you mentioned passive, I thought maybe it was more just like lower to the ground, and I, I think for a splash pad to be really well-used, you kind of have to have that, you know, shooting water effect.
Absolutely, yeah, that's exactly what they, they took from Peace Park.
Great. And then for the rain garden areas, the, is, the idea is that that would be kind of like no access, true, like pollinator?
Absolutely, yeah, and, and what we're going through, and we'll go through this process in the design phase, we went back and forth with having this be sort of a discovery educational experience. Where you're kind of learning these things on your own, and maybe we have something online that teaches you about what's out there without signage. So you can overdo it with signage sometimes, but we also have discussed having interpretive signage that discusses what plants are out there, why it's important to have pollinator areas. So that wasn't, that, that final determination didn't come through this master plan process, but through design, we'll be looking at how we tell that story.
Cool, and actually related to signage, I'm assuming y'all would have like signage related to the water tower and the history of the area and all that jazz.
Yeah, absolutely, going back to that same topic, we, we're discussing whether to do that for the story about, you know, access of water and then conveying it down south through the park. So one way or another, we'll have some stories and educational components to this, we'll try to get information to folks, whether that's a QR code and they, they get online and try to find as much information as they can. Or we put interpretive signage out there to tell that story. Either way, that story will be told, we just haven't gotten to the point where we have decided the best path for it.
Cool, well, that's all the questions I had, and I, I just want to say thank you, I mean, this is a really, really, really exciting park. I see this and I could imagine me taking my kid out here, even my nieces and nephew that are a little bit older. And I think that it could be a place that a lot of different people would enjoy for very different reasons. And it's cool that it's able to be longer than was originally anticipated, you know. When we were first talking about it, it seemed like it was going to be kind of a smaller area, and I, I couldn't really see the vision. area, and I I couldn't really see the vision of it being like truly interactive and and having a lot of different things that could engage folks, but but having the ability of it being longer is is pretty exciting. So thank you.
Yeah. Even as parks folks, we had trouble seeing the vision sometimes. That's why you bring people like TBG and BRS in to help you with that.
Super cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great. I was really excited to see the final the final renderings here, and I I think I'll echo what you're saying as well. I think it's a really nice connection between the historic Flugerville and and kind of the Flugerville that we're becoming in the future. And I think this is a really nice way to honor the water tower, which a lot of towns have in a way that I think is going to be very active for folks and not just, you know, unlike our neighbors to the north that just have a ton of lights on theirs. We have pretty cool multicolored lights now, but I think this will be really great to allow folks to to congregate. Also, really like the blend of the passive and active, to touch on the multi-generational pieces of it. I think, you know, a lot of times shade is obviously number one in all of our parks, but seating opportunities and time for relaxation, I think, is is really important, and I think this is a a great blend. One of the things I was really surprised about was, I don't know if any of the public engagements I've been involved in really had like no negativity of the neighbors immediately by, and I think there was maybe one negative comment in in all of the feedback and in some of the conversations I had with folks in the neighborhood while y'all were doing the overarching engagement, they were really excited about the opportunity to have this space and to have it not be, you know, quote-unquote, just another playground or pocket park. So I think it's really great that we're, you know, sort of helping to bring that to life, including their support of closing off the road as well, which, you know, we would we would want to be very sensitive to that, and it seemed like there was overwhelming support for, hey, we'd rather have a contiguous park area here.
Yeah.
Cool. So, yeah, thank you all for for the fantastic work on this.
Yeah, great job.
Absolutely. All right. Thanks, y'all.
There's nothing else, we'll consider a motion to approve?
I'd like to approve. Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, item 4B. Discuss and consider an application to amend the North Point planned unit development as approved previously to adjust the greenway on the east side of the development for an approximately 120 acres. And Kristen, you're up for this presentation.
Alrighty. Good evening, Chair and Commission. So tonight, we have a proposed amendment to the North Point PUD. The North Point PUD was originally approved in 2019 as an urban development with a variety of commercial and residential uses. The east side of the PUD is currently moving forward with development, and as part of this development, has brought forth a minor amendment to move the portion of greenway in the middle of the eastern campus to a more publicly accessible location within the PUD. The greenway is meant to be a public amenity to the residential and commercial office that is located on this portion of the PUD. It should be publicly accessible. With the current development and the way it is moving forward, the greenway in the middle of the property posed a obstacle to being publicly accessible. And so they have proposed to move forward with a minor amendment to move this greenway from the middle of the PUD as shown in the original concept plan to the North Point portion of the property as shown in the amended concept plan. As part of this amendment, they have also proposed a provision that the greenway should be at least one acre in order for it to count towards parkland. If it doesn't meet that one acre requirement, then they would be dedicating parkland or fee-in lieu and public and parkland dedication and development per the PUD and per Subchapter 14 of the Unified Development Code. Along with this amendment, they are also proposing an update to the private street network. As you can see, it doesn't reduce the connectivity in this area, it simply takes it off of the conceptual plan. Current plans are providing for these connections throughout the private development. It does not move any of the public streets as shown in the dark gray identified as Colorado Sands or Geraldine and meets all of the requirements to be a minor amendment. Staff recommends approval of the minor amendment. I do have the applicant here tonight to present as well if they would like or to answer questions.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Lynch with Metcalf Wolf Stewart Williams here on behalf of the application. I think staff did a great job explaining. I do have other information to provide if you need it. We're just happy to answer questions and appreciate your support.
Cool. I had just one quick question on the red lines. I suspect it's just the way the red line was formatted, but it appears that the amendment to mark the greenway being at least one acre, which I understand also had the a portion that said memory care will not contribute to the required commercial uses? And I assume that is not actually changing in this case, right? That's just a formatting?
Correct. That's part of the second amendment to this PUD and is already a current approved amendment.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't changing. Okay, sounds good.
Is the total acreage the same?
Yes, they will still be required to provide at least 3.2 acres of greenway on the eastern portion of the PUD.
Okay, so it takes, so it looks like the lower, was it the south, the southern corner has increased in acreage, and then the piece that's going away or being moved is has shrunk considerably?
So there isn't, within the PUD, there isn't a specific acreage tied to either one of these locations. I can say that the bottom half is currently being developed as a detention pond for stormwater runoff from the extension of Colorado Sands and future development. It is about two acres at the moment, which would leave the northern half approximately 1.2 acres.
Okay, so initially, according to the current image, I was just guessing, the detention pond was probably an acre, acre and a half? Is that right? And now, and so then some of that land has been expanded, so larger detention pond, and then the publicly accessible part is just less, but on the north, is that, is that, I'm reading correctly?
That is currently how it is developed. The detention pond to the south also is going to have passive recreation such as a trail around it, as well as enhanced landscaping as part of that plan set. So it's not just a detention pond on the south side, but it won't count towards their parkland.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I had one other question about Geraldine Drive, which is the connectivity between 685 and 130?
Yes.
I know that cuts through the greenway. Are there any specifications in the PUD on how that will be addressed?
Um, so...
Considering what you just said around, there will be some passive and maybe some active in the greenway, just wanted to see.
So this amendment is strictly for the greenway located on the eastern portion of the PUD.
Okay.
The western portion is not being amended at this time. That portion is still going to be a public amenities, will have trail and and those sort of things located in it.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's not changed. Okay. I think that was all my questions. Anybody else? All right, if there's nothing else, I'll request a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to items five in our, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more in six. So we have a discuss and consider approval of the 2025 CDBG action plan.
Alrighty, and good evening, Chair and Commission. So tonight, we bring forward the Plan Year 2025 Annual Action Plan for the CDBG grant. As an overview of the program, it is a federal grant administered by HUD to entitlement communities to help benefit the low and moderate income individuals within that community. So as part of selecting projects, each project must meet one of the three national objectives, benefit a low to moderate income individual, prevent or eliminate a blight, or address an urban, an urgent need within the development, within the community. Every five years, the city goes through a consolidated annual action plan. Last year, the consolidated annual action plan was updated, and as part of that, priorities and needs were identified. Each year, the plan seeks to address the high priority needs from the consolidated action plan. So as part of the 2025 action plan, we have infrastructure projects, programs, and administration. So this year, the majority of the grant will be going towards the completion of Parkway Drive that will go under construction within the fiscal year 26. There's approximately $10,000 for the youth and senior scholarships, with the remaining going towards administration. So tonight, the next steps for this after the meeting here tonight will be to go to City Council for approval, and then staff will be submitting this ahead of the August deadline for approval.
I just have one question, sorry. Do you see any changes happening with what's happening in the government right now, unlike changing any of our HUD dollars? Like it being reduced, I guess I should say?
So we actually received more money this year versus prior year, about $20,000 more. The total this year is going to be $347,221, which is an increase over last year's. But staff is being mindful that that could change.
Okay, yeah.
And the construction of Parkway Drive is included within the five-year CIP to be covered by that for construction as well, so that we can finish out this project if something happens.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, I'm really happy with with the plan and the projects, and I think, you know, after a few years too of of trying to get the Workforce Solutions Partnership going and more active, and a couple of the other ideas that we struggled to get public engagement on, I think this is really great that we're trying a more focused approach on a couple of things that we're pretty confident in. I think that's that's a really good, good direction, and and always love to see our neighborhood rejuvenation work with these capital projects of the roads, similar to what we did this year. One of the things I noticed in the report that I wanted to ask briefly about was, one of the two comments I saw from our engagement with the county was around food insecurity, and I don't believe we've ever attempted any programs related to that. And it stuck out to me because I know we've had a lot of conversations about housing affordability, and we rely on the county, obviously, to support that, as well as the homelessness population. But I was curious about whether something ended up below the lines, or if we've considered food insecurity as part of this project, as I know that's a pretty substantial portion of one of the pillars that HUD supports.
Yes. So city staff has looked into that as part of using this towards our, as one of the projects. The issue currently is the city does not have something that just supports city residents. Travis County supports Travis County as a whole, and we cannot ask them to only support city of Flugerville residents at this time. City staff has looked into other projects to help support that need. So it is something that we are currently looking into and working on. We have not found a project that we can fund at the at this moment, but we we are currently looking into it.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I think there's a, there's a, continues to be a growing need for that type of support, so I think we can probably put our heads together and come up with something creative there. One other thing that I noticed in there, and again, very happy with the plan, fully supportive of what we have, but the other thing I noticed was that we had called out that I believe there's like 226 still homes built in the era of lead paint. And I was wondering if, I'm unaware of us previously having a program necessarily to reach out to those homeowners and help connect them to remediation resources, but I'm curious if, whether or not you know that that's been attempted and was successful or not, and/or if that's something we should be looking at now.
To my knowledge, the city has not moved forward with a program like that. Travis County does have resources to help with that, and should that become an issue, city staff has directed them to Travis County.
Okay. Do we know what those residents are so that we could take a proactive approach?
We do not, unfortunately. They're going to be some of our older homes in our older block groups, but we don't know off the top, offhand, exactly which homes those are.
Got it, okay. And then do we anticipate any changes to the blocks in this plan year? Or were there any changes?
So we are anticipating changes as based on the census. Our, we have two block groups currently in the city. One is towards the west of town, the Edgemere-Windemere Parkway Drive area, and then we also have one in east portion of town, the Gatlinburg subdivision. We anticipate losing all or most of that one because of development along Wells Branch, specifically the Liso subdivision that has brought in newer homes and has bumped that up.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you. I think that was everything I had.
That's a great, this is great.
Yes, absolutely. I, yeah, I think you're doing a great job of doing a lot with a little.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Cool. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll go into our public hearings. We have two, three this evening. First up is 5A to receive public comment and consider an application for a specific use permit for proposed use of office warehouse within the urban CL4 at 19241 Wilkie Lane. And Myful, you're up for this one.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's specific use permit is for the Work Hub Flugerville. The property we're looking at tonight is requesting to have an office warehouse use within the CL4 zoning. The property is located on the south side of Wilkie Lane. We're just to the east of the Victory City Church, and we have the adjacent subdivision of Highland Park north directly to the south of us. The subject property is located at the southwest intersection of Wilkie Lane and Hunting Tower Castle Boulevard. The site is 5.8 acres in size and is currently vacant. The property has the Corridor Zoning District, urban CL4. This district is intended to create vibrant and walkable neighborhoods and employment centers, and mixed-use commercial and innovative centers. As you can see, the adjacent properties to both the east and the west both share the CL4 zoning district, and then we have the single-family suburban to the south. Again, the applicant is requesting the site for office warehouse, and in the zoning district that requires a SUP. And office warehouse is generally considered to be a structure devoted to storage, warehousing, and distribution of goods, supplies, and equipment, and that could also include retail and office components as well. The applicant is proposing to construct two structures that will be an estimated 71,000 square feet in size. This will include 28 offices and warehouse suites, and then 49 co-warehouse units. It's estimated to have around 183 parking spaces. And in addition to this, it is a UDC requirement that when CL4 zoning is directly adjacent to single-family residential, there has to be a 50-foot vegetative buffer yard, and this will assist in limiting the impact on that adjacent neighborhood. Additionally, being that this project is part of the Corridor District, the UDC has additional requirements that include a complete submittal, orienting structures towards public right-of-way, design compatibility, not having any historical or architectural negative impacts on the area. And in viewing this, it was staff's determination that the proposed use and layout for the office warehouse meets that UDC, and all applicable UDC requirements pertaining to design or architecture, those will all be enforced at the time of site development plan for us. So staff finds that the request for the office warehouse use complies with the approving criteria for an SUP. Staff recommends approval of this SUP with the following conditions. The height, I know it's a little bit smaller there, but a height limitation of 30 feet requires that the two buildings be oriented as they are shown on the concept plan, that these structures provide for multiple tenants, that... for multiple tenants, that there is no outside storage, and there is no 18-wheeler parking. These conditions will help ensure that the end result product that the applicant will be sharing with you here shortly, that design meets that intent. This was noticed in the newspaper, signs were posted, and letters went out, as right now I have only received one phone call, and that wasn't for or against, that was just a general, you know, I received a letter, what is meaning, and just an explanation that someone is interested in bringing in an office warehouse. The applicant is here, and they have a presentation they would like to share with you, and staff is here to answer any questions they may have.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having us here to explain what Work Hub is. So I'll, before going into each and every page of it and boring you, I would just start with a small pitch for my company. My company is called Work Hub Development. So this company is a formation of two immigrants who had the American dream come true. So they found a problem, they found a solution, and here I am standing in front of you now expanding from Houston all the way to Austin. And what brought us to Austin, it's the demographics in Austin, especially the city of Flugerville. So we are very much a data-driven company, and what we do is we analyze data to see where is the next best space for Work Hub to be, because we want these business online entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs who come to us to be successful. So how do we do it? We look at the demographics of the average household income, the population growth rate, the purchasing power or buying capacity for these communities around it, and based on that, we have a proprietary software that we have access to in regards with our collaboration joint venture with Davidson Kempner. It's a private equity investor based in New York, so they have $36 billion investments around the globe, and they gave us access to it. And that software helps us to identify the best place to work up, because not only we want to succeed, we also want all the entrepreneurs that who come to our business parks to succeed. And one good thing about Work Hub is we don't just build spaces to lease up, we build a community there. So how we do that? We engage on a monthly basis, we have a meeting of all the tenants, we bring in lenders, we bring in speakers to help them in marketing, whatever the case may be, and we build a community in there which can help themselves to grow and be the best business out there. And one interesting stats that we found during our research is that the city of Flugerville has the highest number of patent applications in the country, and so we want to build this incubator space for this online entrepreneurs who are out of their homes, like Apple and Google, who wants to come out of their house but not go with 10,000 square foot warehouse space, but, or an office slash flex space, but they want something small that is budget-friendly, and we make sure that we can build that premium business parks that would help them achieve that goal. And our goal is to create the new Apple and Googles from the city of Flugerville. So now I will start with the presentation that we have prepared. So on the index, we will go through the location, the project introduction, site plan, specifics, and everything that you want to know about the project. So this was already very well explained by Michael about the location of the project. So again, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this tells you what Work Hub is and what Work Hub envisions for Flugerville, for the city of Flugerville. The site plan. So there's one small change with that as in the presentation that Michael said, he has included 49 co-warehousing units. So that is a new business concept called Flex Space, where small, like, you know, spaces for like 300 square foot, 400 square foot for these online entrepreneurs and businesses who wants to start again in the smaller range. But we won't be having that in our final plan, but we are still going through it, but we will be having approximate 2,000 square foot spaces for businesses that could be, as mentioned in the CL4 listing, it could be retail, wholesale sales, because we, one of the, one of our tenants in Houston that we take pride in, in housing, is called Flux Works, F-L-U-X Flux Works. So they won a contract from NASA for when they invented a magnetic gear system that NASA can use in the moon rover, on the mission to the moon. So that's one of the, so we want businesses like that, who are not, like, you know, who is out of their garages, they're innovators, they want to create new things in the market, be successful, and we want to be part of that, like, help them grow there. So this is, will be more or less the plan. Instead of having that office flex warehouses, 49 co-warehousing units to the left of building one, we will have regular suites. And one thing, again, we pay attention to with Work Hub is how we take care of the vegetation around it, the look and feel of the buildings, the landscaping. We want to make sure that anybody who walks into it gets that premium feel, because we always make sure our business parks looks the best, so that our competition, competitors doesn't even fight a chance. So this is it, 36 units, 71,527 square foot, approximate average suite size is 1,189, 5.84 acres. Vehicle parking, it has gone up to 212 at this point, that will exceed the city's limitation, needs for parking. And the green area, as you can see, we have 28.5% green area, and the payment area is 43.65%, and the building area is just 28.10%. So this talks a little bit more about the buildings and the floor plans. As you can see, diminishing walls, demising walls, insulated glass storefronts and windows, polished floor in communal areas, high ceilings. So that is another thing that we take pride, is that we build the most energy-efficient like units that you can find out there. So how do we do it? We make sure that we, how, that harness a lot of sunlight into these units, so that it is not, doesn't have a higher electrical bill. And also, we use state-of-the-art LED lighting, which is, again, our goal is to create lighting that doesn't pollute the area, but to make sure that it is shaped in a certain way, so it lights the ground, but not anything around, like, you know, to a certain height. And we are ADA and fire compliance, fully designed to meet the safety regulations. This is, again, a breakdown of the suite sizes. Look and feel. As I said, we work with each and every city that, like, you know, we have been to, and we try to incorporate what the city wants us to do. Make the, as I said, we want a premium business park. We doesn't want something that looks sketchy for an area. We want the neighbors and everyone, we want to be friends with everyone. And the small thing is that now the Victory City Church, they need for parking, and we are collaborating with them in providing parking for them at the same time. So we always want to make sure that we have good neighbors, we take care of our neighbors, we address their needs, and we make sure that they're happy that we are there. This is just a renter, the look and feel. This is one of the renderings of our business parks down in Houston, and also in Denver, This is out of the, like, the inside view. It could be like this, it could be, again, it's based on the end user, they could have, like, we have, in one of our business parks, we have a gym, so it could be a gym, it could be a dance floor, we have a dance floor, or it could be for a business owner that is ready, this online entrepreneurs. In the state of Texas, we found that the market is like $2.59 billion for online entrepreneurs. So we are there to address that market, that they have the right space to grow their businesses. Look and feel. This is an estimated economic impact report that what Work Hub will be bringing into the city of Flugerville in sales value and in investment-wise, creating jobs and everything. And that's it. May I please ask if you have any questions?
Great. Before we get into that, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in the public hearing portion of this?
Yes, right here.
Okay, you can come up. Could you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Victor Motte. I live right behind where they're supposed to make this building. I'd like to know how is that going to impact our community, our streets? Why I keep getting those letters? Are they going to do something different?
Sorry, could you please give a question?
Yeah, are you going to make any, is it going to affect our streets? Are you going to have more traffic to it?
Yeah.
Hey, sorry, if you're not on the microphone, but yeah, if you want to go ahead and finish asking your question, then we can.
No, that's fine. Now, I was just asking if there's going to create more traffic to our street. I mean, before they make the apartments, there was no traffic to our, now there's traffic. That's, and you guys should go and see how people from those apartments are driving to our streets. Now, they're going to make this, is it going to cause more traffic? Is it going to be big trucks coming to our streets, in and out?
All right, thank you.
All right.
Was there anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moves.
All right, all in favor?
Second.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. Public hearing is closed on that item. Actually, I don't know if the applicant wants to address the citizen concern around traffic ingress and egress, if you'd like to.
Yes.
Thanks.
So on the traffic part of it, we always, like, you know, go with Tech Start, they require us to, like, based on the exits that be, like, you know, come in the conceptual sites, well, we plan to have exits, and so we work with Tech Start to see the traffic analysis on that area. And based on our experience with our business parks and the scale of this business park that we have as compared to other business parks in Houston, I could very much certify that we don't create that big of a traffic volume that would affect the Huntington Boulevard Road. It will be more of the traffic that might be moving towards the Wilk Lane, which is the freeway exit, instead of going through the Huntington Boulevard. So that Huntington Boulevard is mainly there to help the neighbors, because we expect to find business owners who is in that neighborhood right behind us to have a business park, like, have the office suits there. So that is one of the reasons we have it there, so it is easily accessible for them, and we have never had any issues in all of our business parks down in Houston where parking has become an issue.
Thank you. And I did want to also take the opportunity, since you're still up there, to ask about the situation with trucks. I know I'm always cautious when we add, you know, contingencies to these approvals, and I know specifically we're looking to avoid having, you know, 18-wheelers parked there, which is pretty common for, for us to restrict that in some of these spaces. I couldn't tell from your designs whether these buildings do include loading docks, what type of truck and large vehicle traffic you anticipate, those sorts of things?
So in case of trucks, what we anticipate is UPS or Amazon or trucks like that, nothing on the size of an 18-wheeler. But if there's a case where the, one of the business owners have a bigger truck coming in to unload the stuff, I cannot speak, I cannot guarantee say that, you know, no 18-wheeler will ever enter the business park, but I can, pretty much based on my experience, we could, we see more of Amazon trucks and UPS trucks coming in, taking shipping or bringing, like, you know, shipping stuff out of there. For instance, we have a leather boutique in one of our business parks. So always, like, you know, these trucks come in from Amazon, they do online sales, they come pick it up from there. So nothing big of, like, 18-wheelers usually come to our business parks, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, and I would say it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of space for that. Certainly not room for a turnaround or anything like that, especially. So, okay, thank you for that.
Awesome.
Any other comments, questions?
I mean, I assume they did, like, a traffic impact analysis, because this is on, or it was not required by Tech Start?
So at this point of conceptual, we don't have to do it, but we are, like, you know, ready to work with Tech Start to do that analysis.
Okay.
So the only, the only issue that I imagine is about the no outside storage. You know, I've been a tenant and a property manager for products like this, and, I mean, even in the businesses that I was in, every now and then there'd be an 18-wheeler roll up, and they go, hey, we're about to drop off, whatever, where do you want to put this? And you go, uh, I'm not ready for it. And so, you know, with the, my hesitation would be around, you know, writing a special designation and then telling, whatever, 28, 30 people, hey, you can't ever have any outside storage. Most of the time, small businesses, you know, in my experience, struggle with storage, right? Where do I put stuff? Because I've only got 2,500 square feet or 2,000 square feet, and I've already maxed out what I got, because I'm stacking it in, and then I got more stuff that comes in. And so I think that, that strikes me as a pretty difficult thing to ask for tenants, especially that many of them. You know, and obviously, you're hoping that they all get along, and, you know, you might have tenants that take multiple spaces, so that can consolidate some of that, but I think that that presents a challenge. And then, there was one other thing, but I don't recall exactly what it is, so I'll remember it later. Anyway, yes?
If I could, just on your outdoor storage, it's a big comment and recommendation from staff to preclude outdoor storage, primarily because of the location. So if you're thinking about, it's on 45, we don't, we don't want to see those things outside. And so while they might have the need for a quick drop-off, and they might drop them behind the building or something like that, they need to be moved inside. It's not in an industrial area where you have more outdoor storage and things like that. We're also looking at the View Corridor coming into Flugerville, this is one of the gateways and entrances on 45. And so I would just note that I would take that into consideration when thinking about, not just the end user, but also kind of the view and use of the property if considering allowing outdoor storage.
Yeah. I mean, I think the workaround for most of the end users, most of the tenants, will be those pods that they say are going to be temporary, and then they're stuck there for, I think this is what we're talking about. It is considered outside storage, but what is the York contingency? Like, what is that game plan? Because if they keep it there longer than two days, is that a fine? What is the?
So for us, how we mitigate issues like this is, like, you know, we have a property manager who's there, like, you know, from Monday to Friday, and he's, you'll be available on call on Saturdays and Sundays if there is, like, you know, a tenant needs, he's out of town and he needs something to be shipped into his office, something is coming in, he needs to receive it, we have a property manager who takes care of that. And how do we mitigate it? As you specifically said, we do put a limit, we tell them that we cannot have any of your items sit outside for more than two days, otherwise our management will remove it and trash it. So that's how we mitigate it. And if there's a tenant who's telling us, I am out of town, I will be not there for four days or five days, the case may be, then what we do is we make sure that we put them in a place which is a common area, so that it is out of, like, the business park. Again, we want to create a space that is premium, we don't want our business parks to look bad. We want to be successful, and along with us being successful, we want others to help them in problems like this. So that's how we mitigate those issues.
Michael, would you mind pulling up the slide with the recommendation, please, just so we can look at that wording one last time? Thank you.
Thank you.
So height limitation of 30 feet, they've covered that, that is their plan, two buildings to be oriented, that absolutely makes sense from our perspective, multiple tenant spaces, no outside storage, and no 18-wheeler parking. Any other thoughts?
No. I mean, I think the only issue, again, thinking about the neighbors, is since there's not been an impact done yet, and we don't know the traffic, I mean, I'm not sure I'm going to say yes tonight.
Okay.
Because I would like to know. Because if I live, I don't live there, but I mean, if I did live there, I'd want to know.
Sure. I mean, this is for, for right now, this is for a specific use that's going to that area. It's usually at the time of plating or site development that we, that we're going to require our traffic impact analysis. And if that's over its 2,000 trips, that may create additional lineage or, you know, different endpoints. And what we're looking at here, those, you know, those driveway openings, those are subject to shift based on where engineering feels that is most appropriate to. So it's, it is somewhat of a concept there, but the traffic impact analysis will be analyzed at the time of plating and site development plan.
And then they come back again? Or no? To ask us?
If you approve tonight, they would be free to move forward with plating and site development plan.
Okay.
I think this is a little bit unique, because it's a PUD and a ZONE case where they're updating it, and so I think for the SUP, whereas traditionally for an SUP, we wouldn't necessarily have full concepts drawn out and.
Correct, yeah. I mean, no, it's a great concept, but I don't know.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with conditions as outlined by the city staff.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? Want to oppose? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have 5B to receive public comment and consider an application to rezone approximately 50.455 acres from agriculture development reserve to single-family residential. And this is, don't see the address for this, sorry.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So this is for a property, the project is called Cameron Valley Rezoning. This is for a piece of property that's outlined in that gold star on, on your image there. And so I, I kind of blew Adjacent to Cameron Road is just to the west and Steger Lane is along the north and along the east sides there. This is approximately a 75-acre tract of land. As I mentioned, it was recently annexed into the city limits. The property that you see over in the southwest corner that's under construction right now, that is known as the Meadowlark Preserve Neighborhood, that was zoned as a planned unit development, came through the process and they're creating those single-family homes. Just at the northwest corner is a piece of property that's owned by the, the school district. All the rest of the land that's surrounding that area is currently in our ETJ and has home sites on it or is of agricultural use. Directly to the south is a church property there, along with the cemetery. So a little bit of history on this, the property owner back in 2008 went through a non-annexation agreement with the city of Flugerville and what that basically meant was that they would continue their agricultural uses, provided that they didn't pursue any kind of development, the city wouldn't pursue any kind of annexation. But within that agreement, also said that if they decided to make a change to it and wanted to develop the property, then that was essentially their petition for annexation. They had, they have decided to move forward with something different, they went through that process and it became annexed into the city just in March of this year. During that, following annexation, it reserved, received the development reserve agricultural zoning classification, it's been like that since. So the proposed request is to look at this property, break it up through four different zoning districts and we'll talk about each one of these different pieces. But essentially trying to create a new neighborhood out on the east side of Cameron Road there. The largest portion of the property is proposed to be zoned for the single-family residential area that encompasses approximately 50 and a half acres of land. Single-family mixed use is proposed down on the southeast corner of the, of the tract, it's approximately nine-acre piece of property. General Business One is approximately three and a half acre piece of property at the southwest corner and then going from the northwest to the southeast kind of-ish direction is the parks facilities and open space, which is approximately 12 acres and encompass existing drainage areas that go through there. We'll run through the zoning districts real quick. As you'll recall, single-family residential zoning district is one of those that we use for master planning. It allows for a variety of lot sizes and actually has development conditions associated with it when, based on lot sizes. So for 50 acres or more, that's one of those situations where they're allowed to have 50-foot wide single-family lots. They will have a requirement of, at least 25% of the lots will need to be 7,500 square feet in area and at least 10% are required to be at 9,000 square feet. Single-family mixed use zoning district, you'll recall, we've gone through that zoning recently for other cases, but that allows for diversity of housing types. Typically, it's on smaller acreage, roughly 20 acres is typical. Allows for single-family attached as well as detached and then when certain conditions are met, we can look at non-residential development that's consistent with the neighborhood. Parks facilities and open space is our, our classification that we would apply towards areas that we would look for a park. And then General Business One District is our general commercial zoning district that we typically have along roads like 685 as an example, where you have the regular kind of commercial that could support a neighborhood but also support regional trade. This is within, in the comprehensive plan, we have different sub-districts as you recall and this is actually in one of those areas that we haven't touched yet. So this is the southeastern preserves district. There's a patchwork of colors that are on there that basically represents a variety of land uses, looking at residential and a variety of housing types, a variety of residential, mixed with commercial as well as some employment. Lots of open space going through there, mostly through the creek systems. Some of the aspirational goals within this area was to have that diversity of housing, looking at diversity of land types, as well as increasing connectivity, both through vehicular connectivity and through the trail systems and parks and open space. One of the other aspects to this area was to hone in on the agricultural nature of the area. And so trying to densify, trying to have more of an intensity on the residential while still maintaining open space and green areas. Within this portion of that, that district, there's four different sections or categories, if you will, of the comprehensive plan. The beigeish colors, the traditional neighborhood, that's the area that's proposed to be zoned for the single-family residential. Again, it's, it's the typical kind of residential type of development that's anticipated there. Maybe a mixture of densities and the opportunity for some nearby retail or office spaces. The mixed-use neighborhood is the area that's in pink there that's highlighted in the light blue. That's the area that was proposed for single-family mixed use. We envisioned to have a variety of housing types there, a little bit more density there, also the opportunity for more commercial developments that, that would accommodate or that would coincide with the, the higher densities as well as the single-family in that area. Mixed use in this context is envisioned to both be, it could be vertical, but it could also be horizontal mixed use. Mixed use commercial is the, the area that's over on the left side or on the western end, proposed for the General Business One District. This is the area that's not, it, it's more anticipated to have higher intensity commercial developments there. And if residential was to be included, it'd come through as apartments. The GB1 zoning district does allow for multifamily to be incorporated, but it requires it to be as a vertical mixed use. And last but not least, parks and open space civic recreation. The proposed zoning districts directly align with how the comprehensive plan is proposed. This area, it allows for the diversity of housing, it allows for the opportunity for mixed use, mixture of uses being horizontal and/or being vertical mixed use. Staff does recommend approval, city council is looking to consider this item in later June. Because we only had two of the, the properties generally in that area that are within the city limits, or two notifications that went out to those, we did not receive any news, any information from them. But sites were also posted out on the property, but we did not receive any calls. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well, but again, this is being the zoning case, they, I've encouraged them not to talk about necessarily a development plan because that would be through the subdivision process, but instead we're looking at the uses.
Sure. Thanks, Jeremy. Is there, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moves?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed.
I have a question. How, so utility-wise, right? It's my understanding that at some point out there in the east, there is another rise that causes us to have a new lift station. Is, is this over that hill or is it still on the west side of whatever that geographical feature is?
So I will do my best in answering your utility question.
Well, obviously, my question was perfect.
We'll review all of that during the subdivision process, but the short would be that there are some breaks that are in there. There's anticipated to be a force main that will likely go through Cameron Road. There's a lift station that is tied to the Meadowlark Preserve subdivision, which is in that gray just at the bottom, at the bottom part of the picture there. There's a lift station at that point that then pumps over to the Carmel Lift Station.
Okay. So I guess, so I guess there's a neighborhood that's being built essentially across the street. Has that already been tied in to city services? Like, is that all already in there?
So they're going through the process right now of constructing it, yeah. There's a lift station, as I mentioned, that, that southern gray extent is where a lift station is, that's tied to that Meadowlark Preserve development.
Okay.
This is perhaps another hypothetical pending the future plans, but given the alignment of Steger with Jesse Bowles, is that something we would anticipate potentially trying to correct for?
Yes. And, and that, I didn't mention that, but yes, through the subdivision process, we'll have Steger Lane connecting eastward to Jesse Bowles, that was identified inside of our mobility master plan that we just approved. Steger Lane would actually be a minor, it's a collector going through there and then the Steger at the, at the north end is a major collector and that would have an 80-foot of right-of-way that would also continue east-west. So, yeah, there will be additional connectivity through there.
Great. Yeah, that's a good spot for it. Okay, glad to hear that. Thanks.
Apologies, you already covered it. Is the, the park space, is that pretty much aligned with the floodplain that would be unbuildable anyways?
Yes. And, and there may be some buildable spaces in there as they get into the subdivision piece, but, yeah.
All right. If there's no further comments, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. One more item this evening, 5C, which is a public hearing to consider approving a replat for downtown east-west. Yes. I appreciate the attempt at, you know, using DTE instead of saying east-west.
Looks like it was cut out. Sorry, one little technical difficulty. Okay, it looks like it was not, it's not in the presentation that we have here, but I hope that you have the report and the staff there. I'm not sure how that got cut out. But yes, we are looking at here is the replat for the portion of the downtown east-west. I'm sure you're aware of the downtown east project that we saw the PUD for just a short time ago, is now under construction. That's the new city hall, the new rec center and a portion of Main Street that will eventually connect from FM 685 to Railroad. The portion of the bridge that goes over the creek and from where we're looking at here tonight, this final plat going to the west, connecting to Railroad, that'll come at a later time at a final plat. What we're looking at here tonight is a five-lot, non-residential replat going from two lots to five, where the owners are the city of Flugerville and First United Methodist Church. And a portion of that will be the 497 feet of Main Street. Lots 1A and 2A will have access to the East Piccon Street and all lots will have the access to Main Street. And as you recall from our PUD, going through that area there, Main Street will have parallel parking on either sides of the roadway and there will be extended sidewalks on either side as well. And I apologize for, I'm not sure how that got cut short, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
And so this does take into effect the updated sort of mobility plan specs for things like the sidewalk versus multi-ease path and the 10-foot versus no, or not at this, not at this stage? Okay.
For this, we do, we do, we did anticipate a larger system. I believe we're gonna have the 12-foot and then the eight-foot separating, but I don't think this would be fully up to date with the mobility.
Got it. Okay. I don't see any members of the public present with us, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. All right. Public hearing is closed.
So one question. So based on looking at the map, it looks like the rezoning includes all the property owned by the church, like essentially their entire.
Replat, replat, yeah. Yes.
Excuse me. So, so y'all are just defining the boundaries?
Yes, that, what is owned by that church, it will be split into two and then the property directly to the west will be split into three and then a portion of that will include cutting through from that Main Street that'll give us that connection.
Okay, so based on what you're describing, is that the former food court, the food truck land?
Yes.
The gin tract?
And who, and how, and, and will this particular change have any positive impact on that particular site?
It does.
Great.
So I think maybe to clarify just a little bit, so Main Street was the main reason to, kind of, that caused this replat. We have an agreement with the church, we'll be transacting the property, the city purchased the north side of Main Street from the church, which is where they currently have some parking and we will be, so we purchased that, we were exchanging property to, which is the gin tract or the former food truck court, to build new parking for the church on the south side of Main. So the church's property will all be now south of Main Street.
Okay.
And so it'll be parking lot, church, property, all south of Main.
Okay. And will that, will that paving, I guess, extend all the way to that entryway directly across from the fire department?
It will not. If you think of El Ring Cone, the vacant tract immediately adjacent to that and then the gin property is owned by Tech dot, known as the Mo Can right-of-way, so that will remain vacant.
Okay. That explains that.
Great.
Thank you.
So do the, do we have to mess with the Mo Can right-of-way with the Main Street layout?
We do.
And they, they played ball pretty well with that?
We have a memorandum of understanding with Tech dot to cross it with Main Street.
Any other comments or questions? Not gonna take the bait on that one. All right. That's fair. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. And we are adjourned at 8:22.
Reminder, no July meeting.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Maybe I'm going.